All right, I'm going to call the March 17th, 2021 Mashpee School Committee meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, trying out some new audio devices tonight. All right, the next order of business is to ratify the agenda of March 17th. Do you have the motion?
So moved, oh, I move that we ratify the agenda for March 17th.
Okay, motion by Dawn.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any discussion? All right, let's, how do you vote, Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So the agenda is ratified. And next, we have our student representative, Skylah. Skylah, are you there?
She just stopped in.
Okay. Oh, I see you. Skylah, you're up, so you can unmute if you're ready. Skylah, are you ready to go? Not sure she can hear us. Try it again. Skylah, can you hear us?
Yeah.
All right, you're up, honey.
Hi.
All right, now you're muted again, so let's see if we can get you open. There you go.
Is it my turn to present?
It is.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Very exciting news first off is that Mashpee Girls Volleyball won their first game in program history against Carver earlier this week, which is really cool. And Mashpee Football won their first game of the season last Friday on Nantucket, 43-0, which was a very big win to start a very strange season. Ms. Purdy is organizing a CNA certification course for students in Hosa, as well as anyone else who's interested, so it's a really cool opportunity for Mashpee students. The Luwauk' Tha'eta, which is the Math Honor Society, has accepted its new junior members, and it had its first meeting yesterday evening. Mr. T. and Ms. Mills have continued their Music Video Monday tradition. And last week, eighth grader Hannah Rogers, who's also the new Project 351 ambassador, beautifully performed "You Broke Me First" by Tate McCray and Lexi saying "Love You Please Stay", and those can both be seen on Mr. T. and Ms. Mills Twitter page. From the band High School Junior, William Henley played his trumpet in a short video, also on that Twitter page, and it reminded us of how beautiful Mashpee music is and how much we miss it. On Monday, March 8th, Ms. Reynolds hosted a Mappy Hour, where two George Washington University students led a session of Open Street Mapping with Mashpee students, which is great for community service hours, as well as understanding geography and the world around us. The National Technical Honor Society is working on hosting COVID-safe events at the Mashpee store when the weather gets warmer, as well as planning a virtual hackathon, this spread like they usually do in person. The National Art Honor Society had a guest speaker, and it was a friend of Ms. Deshaun's, whose name is Anne, and she taught club members about how to use a software called Procreate, which was really informative, and I know Ms. Deshaun hopes to have students use that software on iPads in the future of her art classes and for the future of the Art Honor Society. The Class of 2022, which is the junior class, My Class, has begun planning our senior shirts and sending out designs on Google Forms to get feedback, which is very exciting. The Boys and Girls Club has selected senior Alexis Bryant to be the 2021 Youth of the Year for the Cape, which is a very big accomplishment. She has been working at the club for three years, and she plans to study nursing in college, so wanted to give her a shout out here, because that's a really big award. And going with that, the Keystone, which is the teen leadership group at the Boys and Girls Club, has been hosting a series of fun COVID-safe events to keep kids social and active. This Friday, they're hosting a volleyball tea night. Last week, they did a hot sauce challenge. Then the week before, they did an escape room. And so, there's a lot of good stuff going on in Mashpee, even amidst everything going on, and so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Skylah, that was a really great report, lots of good stuff. Are there any questions for Skylah? All right, looks like you're getting off easy tonight, thank you so much.
All right, I'll see you later.
All right, bye.
Bye.
All right, the next item we have on the agenda is representative from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Do we have anyone on tonight?
We were expecting Roxanne, but I don't know, because we're a little bit ahead of schedule, that that might be.
Okay. Well, you guys let me know if she turns up, and then we'll come back to that. Is Deb Tryanos ready to talk about the trip to Europe?
Yes, I am.
Great.
Let me just turn on my camera, hold on. Okay, hi, everyone, Happy St. Patrick's Day. So for the trip, as you can imagine, with COVID, we were unable to go this April, and we made the decision finally to try to move the trip up to next April instead. We wanted to wait until all the students and all the chaperones would be able to be vaccinated. And so, as a result of not being able to go this year, the seniors are unable to, there were nine seniors that were unable to continue to wait to go next year. So they were able to get their money back. Most of the people, if anybody did decide to leave the trip sooner, they were able to get all of their money back except for their deposit, which was $3.99. And if they had purchased the trip insurance, then they got all of it back except for $75. So around 18 people did leave over the course of the year, as it got closer. But the company was, the company was really excellent about everything, and they immediately stopped payments the very first month that COVID hit. They stopped, they were taking deposits out of people's accounts before that that had agreed to do that, and others were going to pay in a one-month sum at the end. But the ones that were doing it monthly ended up having the payments stopped as of last April. And they were stopped until February of this year, when they were supposed to resume for the last four months before we were planning to leave. But now that we moved it up to next April, they won't owe a payment until December 26th of this year. However, they can resume the monthly payments if they wish. And most of them, their monthly payments would be around $200. So this gives us an extra year to spread the payments out and to possibly go back to fundraising. And hopefully, we can bring in some other students to replace those spots that the seniors left or the people who had to go out of it. However, the interesting news was, so some of the parents who had left already, had their child canceled, asked to be re- and stated now that it's moved up to next April. So some parents were very excited that it was postponed. And then, in one or two cases, we had seniors who weren't able to go, but who passed on their trip to their younger sibling. So now their younger sibling was able to take their place, and the company just transferred the money over, so they didn't lose any money at all. And I actually already have a few people who have come up and asked to be able to join the trip now that there is room for them. So I just put them on a waiting list for now, until we were able to speak tonight with you. And so, right now, we have 18 still planning on going. The parents are very interested in still going forward with it. And I just wanted to let you know what has happened and what will happen, and if you have any questions or any problems or any comments for me.
Thanks, Deb.
Sure.
Dawn, you have a question?
So I note on your form that you say that this will allow time for all vaccinations. What is your expectation and what's the requirement going to be in regard to people that will be on this trip related to vaccination for COVID?
Well, you know, our hope is that everyone will have the vaccination by, you know, within the next couple of months. And are you, so are you asking if somebody doesn't want to get the vaccination? I couldn't quite hear you clearly.
Yes, if someone opts not to be vaccinated, would you, would it still be allowed?
Well, then, it's up to them and their parents. I think that as long as everyone else is vaccinated, they can't catch it from them or anything. So I think, you know, as always with health decisions, it's up to the parents what they would want to do. I wouldn't say they couldn't go, because everyone else will already be protected. So, but I have been trying to take every possible precaution and do the best for everyone. So I thought that the best for everyone was to make sure we could get everyone vaccinated, of course, who wants to, and that way, it would be a safer decision for next year. So I wouldn't say I would force someone to do it or kick them off the trip or something. I think it's the same as with school. There's going to be children that can come to school without being vaccinated as well, if that's what their family's belief is. But the company is being really good about all the safety protocols. In fact, they're stricter than they are even at school now. And of course, I don't know what it will look like next year, but I think once everybody has vaccinations, some of the safety protocols won't be necessary. But right now, they have temperature checks daily, and they have large spacing on the bus, and they have doctors on call at every location, which that part is usual. But, and of course, masks and the usual protocols in all the restaurants and so forth.
I'm assuming that you will adhere to CDC guidelines, so if there are issues in regard to the places that you're anticipating on visiting?
Absolutely, absolutely, and the company is extremely aware and responsible about that, and they post constantly about and update their safety forms and so forth. There's a form on the website called Travel With Confidence, and they change it as things keep updating. But of course, they and I are, have our ear to the ground with CDC as far as every minute that it changes. So of course, we're, the safety is the number one priority for the trip for everyone, and so, we're going to absolutely follow every single protocol that we need to, to keep the safety in mind.
Well, I'm hopeful that you will be able to take this trip in 2022. You know, it still is a big unknown whether or not Europe will be a safe place for people to travel to at that point.
Yes, yes, and so, it would be the same thing. We would, if the company has to cancel because Europe isn't open anymore, there's a couple of options where they could reroute us to a different country. Say, you know, Italy isn't open, but we're going to France anyway, so maybe they would just keep us in France for the whole time. Or, you know, they could reroute us if there's a problem such as that. But if it turns out that we can't go to a country, we also have the option to cancel the trip. And they would, if they have to cancel, then would they give us all the money back? But if we cancel, then the people would lose their deposit. So that would be the other consideration. And so, I'm trying to not have anybody lose their deposit if we can help it.
Agreed, I think that's important. I'm surprised that people lost their deposits this last time. I would have thought it was the company that would have been canceling it based upon what was going on, but it sounds like they didn't, and so therefore, unfortunately, some people lost their.
Well, so for the seed years, they met them in the middle and only tried, and gave them, they didn't have them, you'd lose $3.99, they only lost $1.99.
Okay.
So, but they did, they were aware of it when they booked the trip, that this was in the contract at the beginning, that this was something that could happen if they canceled. So I think really, nobody was upset about it, at least not to me. They were more upset that the refund checks took a while or that they had trouble reaching the company, but that was because they have a reduced staff right now, as all companies do, and so, things are taking a little longer for them to answer calls back and so forth. But I had my ear to the ground for everything and encouraged the parents to reach me instead, and I had the answers for them. And I can call a person directly to get help immediately if we needed it. And so, I haven't had any real complaints about losing the money. It was their choice to leave, and they felt it was worth it. And a couple of people have rescheduled to take trips with their seniors somewhere else, so, because they weren't able to do it now, and they had the money already saved, so they were able to do that.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I move to approve the trip to Europe for April 2022.
I second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Jeff to approve the trip to Europe for April of 2022, with a second by Kathy. Is there any further discussion?
I just think it needs to be subject to, well, never mind, let's go.
Well, it is, it is subject to what happens, of course. If there's any safety concerns, then we can change our minds. But if, but right now, I don't want to, I don't want to try to predict what will happen a year from now. I think most of the other schools I talked to that are also doing trips are doing the same thing. They're just postponing a year, and a lot could happen any year, and everything could be much better. But if it isn't, then we have the option to push it further away. But I think, I do think that it'll be safe for now. But thank you for the motion, and thank you for approving. And I promise, I will keep an eye on things and make sure that it's safe. I'm not, we're not going to take anybody anywhere if it isn't, okay?
We haven't voted yet, Deb, but give us one second, we will. I just wanted to say, I think it would be an interesting sociological study to look at those families where the oldest sibling doesn't get to go, and now they pass it down to the younger sibling. Whether that erodes family relations or actually improves family relations, I think.
I think, I think it improves it, because it was this, in one case, the senior, it was her idea to pass it down to her sister, who's a freshman now.
That's right.
So I thought that was very sweet, and she brought it to her family and asked them, and I think it made everybody very happy, so that's an idea. But, and then I had another person add a sibling. So, you know, I think it varies from family to family, as always, but it seems like, for the most part, the people that are interested in the trip still are hanging on. They really want their child to go, and the children really want to go. Those nine seniors really want it to go, so it broke my heart to have to leave them behind, but we wanted to make the right call for the safety.
Yep, I appreciate that. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so it's unanimous. Good luck, Deb, I hope it works out.
Thank you, thank you so much, thanks for listening.
Of course. Thanks for all your work on behalf of those students, we really appreciate it. Okay, so I'm going to circle back, do we have anyone from the tribe hope?
None, this time.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, if that changes, just let me know, otherwise, I'll assume that we don't. All right, Nurse Stacy, COVID-19 update, it's all yours.
Good evening, I will start, I know data dashboard is on the top of the agenda for my section. I don't know if anybody has any questions to the data. I know it's really the same kind of data every month, so nothing really has changed in the format, the numbers are there. The website has the most current numbers, so I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
Just to add, the top section of the chart, as of the 16th, which is yesterday, there were 97 students positive cases and 18 staff positive cases, so it's 115 in total.
Okay, noted, thanks, Patty. Any questions for Stacy on that? Okay, I don't hear any Stacy, so you can keep going.
Right, thank you. So next is discussion on, or update on asymptomatic pool testing. We, as of this evening, this evening, we have 11 staff signed up to participate and 58 students. The breakdown is five staff at the Middle High School with 27 students, parent permission. Foshnet, two staff with 24 students, and Casey Coombs, four staff with seven students. I have been getting contacted by families on a daily basis, asking questions or thinking about one participate, so we're hoping that moving forward, we'll have more participation. But for our first rollout, those numbers, based on our district numbers, are actually where most districts have started. We do have scheduled next week a presentation for the seniors at the high school. I'll be doing by Zoom, just an education on what pool testing is along with Mr. Bell Stracci, and I hope to be able to reach out and do further education, breaking a little PSA video this afternoon, right before this meeting, so hopefully that'll come out soon.
This is awesome.
And people will understand that.
This is a graphic on pool testing that we'll be displaying for kids and putting any places that we can. Just a quick synopsis of the benefits and what it's all about.
And on the flyer, it does say that it's open enrollment, so people can join at any time, and you can withdraw, it's not a binding contract. But hopefully, more and more people will become interested as we do it each week. Any questions on pool testing?
I have one. So the numbers that you've received, that's sufficient to begin pool testing?
Correct, you don't, there's no minimum or maximum. So you start it, usually people participate as it rolls forward and moves forward, so yes. Other questions?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Of the students, is it pretty spread out, is it a spread out sampling, or are you finding it's all kind of one grade? Or do you feel you have a good representation of the grades in the school?
It's pretty spread out through the grades, obviously Casey Coombs is lower, but I think that is just, I mean, you just get more awareness and education. But at the Foshnet and the high school, it's through each grade level, so it is a sampling across, but it is a diverse population. And then some schools have siblings, so they kind of give you that kind of sample too.
Any other questions on pool testing? All right.
Okay, thank you. And then, the next on the list for my part was vaccination update. So as of this evening, we have 128 Mashpee Public School staff, eligible people that are in our schools, participating in the Indian Health Services Provided Vaccination Clinic on Friday. Everyone has received their appointment time. We had a question and answer with Dr. Kelsey Sims last night. That was pretty well attended, and some great questions. I know staff are very grateful, I attended another meeting earlier today and expressed our thanks and gratitude. It's an awesome partnership, and another way for staff to receive the Moderna vaccine. Many other staff have been able and successful in getting vaccinations at other places such as CBS, Orangeville County, and at other places like Gillette. So the rollout is happening in the anticipated timeline that we anticipated, so that is actually very welcomed, happening, and things are moving along with that. Any questions on the vaccination update?
Yes, Jeff.
I just wanted to say that I'm the first person to say when I don't agree with something, but I appreciate all the hard work that the administration and Nurse Stacy put in to get the vaccination plan, the one that fell through, thanks to intervention by the state, and then this one with the tribe, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, it's been a true partnership and collaboration, and I actually got teary earlier, and I'm a little teary now, but yeah, it's very awesome. Thank you.
Kathy, do you have any questions?
Questions?
So based on sort of the availability and kind of individual choices, and, you know, the 128 staff that are going to hopefully get everything, get the first dose on Friday, where does that leave us by the time we have students returning full-time or 100% in person by mid-April?
So again, this group of staff for the 127, 128, whatever number, sorry, 128, will have their second dose on April 16th. So again, your first dose gets you through these 30 days or 28 days, and then you get your booster, and then you're fully considered immunized two weeks after that. Again, many staff have already received, again, Johnson &amp; Johnson is one and done, as we say in the field, many people have already received that, and other staff has received also Pfizer and Moderna. So we actually have a really good number of staff that are either already vaccinated, in process with these one-dose, and have their second dose scheduled, or this plan. So we are actually doing well looking forward.
So are you being nonspecific because you have to be? Or can you tell me what that means? Like, are we going to have 75% of our staff vaccinated? Will we have, and maybe this doesn't a question for you, maybe it's for me.
Again, it's not required, they don't have to provide it to me. So again, I have the 128 known names. Some staff have chosen to give you their information, but again, it's protected health information. So, you know, we are trying to track it, hopefully by the next meeting in April, and definitely by May, I will have better data. But again, it's a role, literally every day, somebody's going to get vaccinated. So I cannot give you a fair number, but I can tell you that we are doing quite well. And anybody who wishes to have a vaccine, either has access, has something scheduled, or has a plan in place to get it done.
But just to add, we are not allowed to ask if a teacher is vaccinated or is getting a vaccine. That's their.
Correct.
That's their private information. So we will never fully know which members of our staff are vaccinated, which ones are not.
If they choose to share it, and most are, it's not like that it's a secret thing. But again, a lot of it's a rolling process piece. And again, it is not required, because it's an emergency authorization vaccination, so it can't be required.
Okay, I guess that's the best answer I can get. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other vaccination questions? Hearing none. The last thing on my section was health advisory update, and we actually discussed pool testing and the vaccination update, so you're current on that. Our last quarterly health advisory meeting is May 12th. And as you know, we do, in the May meeting, review our current wellness policy. So that is on the agenda, so just putting it out there, if you have an interest, to please review it and come prepared at that meeting with any questions or discussions. And that would be our annual review that we do. As you're aware, Mr. Stickley needs that reviewed annually for his program food service for the summer. So that's when we have our initial review, is in May. And that is my update for the evening.
Thanks, Stacy, are there any questions for Stacy? All right, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
I'll be listening in, and thank you all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, so we don't have any in the room here, and Hope says there's nobody in the chat. Let me just give it, let me give it a few seconds here in case, if you're here for public comment, you need to indicate in the chat. I can't tell how many people we have on, Hope. Is it just this one screen?
Yes.
Okay.
There is nothing in the chat.
All right, then I'm gonna move on. The next item on the agenda is the consent motion to approve the minutes.
I have corrections to the minutes. We have to move to the second, number nine.
Okay. All right, so let's take a look at the February 3rd one, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have to have a motion to approve in order to change them first, or do we?
We should, we could have to edit and then say approve it as edited.
Okay, all right. Let's do that then. So the edits to the February 3rd agenda?
So number seven, and Don can help me here. I believe that I have made the motion to approve this school offset, and Don edited to say that it should be up to 637,288,97.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, so those are just switched, Maria? If you're.
One of the seven?
Yeah.
Number seven on the February 3rd.
Switch from Jeff.
Yeah, so Jeff made the motion, and then Don revised the motion. Any other changes to that one, Jeff?
Not for that date.
Okay. And then what about, do you have any, where's the second set?
It's got the patch view on it.
Oh.
On page, on the page six, on the February 26th, School Committee Meeting, number three.
Yes.
I don't believe that's formatted correctly. I think that George called for the vote. It was.
Yeah, because he wouldn't have made the motion.
The motion was by Nicole and was seconded by Kathy.
Yeah, because George doesn't usually make the motions.
That would mean number two also needs to be edited because it says the same thing in number two as well. But George made the motion.
You got that, Maria?
Yep, so Nicole made the motion, seconded by.
Yeah, so just if you're gonna put Mr. Schmidt, then he called for a motion to approve the agenda.
Yep.
Then the motion was made by Mrs. Bartlett and seconded by Mrs. Lewis. He sounds so old, Kevin.
Yeah, I know. I missed the Mrs. I saw that, too. I was like, wait, we went from Ms. to Mrs.?
I liked it when we were Ms. Let's take those. That sounds like my mother-in-law.
But do you even need to have, I guess, Robert's rules, do you even need to have that first line that he called for the motion?
Yeah.
I believe you don't need it in Robert's rules. I believe you can just go right to the motion.
Okay. That sounds great. So we'll just delete that. That'll simplify both of those.
I seem to have a meeting minutes on one page though.
Yes, it was.
I barely recognized it. And then there's a typo in number four on that one.
On the 26th?
Yeah, just adjourn the meeting. Adjourned the meeting. All right. Okay, so now, someone's gonna have to refresh my memory on how this consent motion, because it looks like we have votes scheduled back-to-back. First on the consent motion, and then, and I thought if we did a consent motion, we didn't have to have a vote on the minutes?
Yeah, but you can only do a consent motion if there's no changes to the minutes. So you skip that, and then we do a, I moved to approve the minutes on February 3rd and February 26th as edited.
Thank you. I'm smiling big under my mask. Okay, motion by Jeff to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Don. Any further discussion? All right, I will call for the vote. Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I also vote yes. All right. Patty, I guess it's, we're on you, report of the superintendent.
So the first item under my section is related to this school year. One of the first things I just wanted to point out, it was, this is the second week, or the week before last was Sunday, was when we sent an email to families, really encouraging or requiring that it was your in-person learning week, that you needed to be in school in order for you to be marked president, to be engaged with learning. Because what we had found is, over time, many families seem to have allowed their children to, and there were reasons, there were legitimate medical reasons as well, but a lot of students seemed to just be very comfortable learning from home. And I just truly feel that wasn't the right place for them to be learning, or the best place to learn. So last week, we had quite a few students return. And then this week, I believe, is the best. Sorry. And also quite a few students have returned. And part of that was we wanting to get them a little bit more prepared for coming back to schools, full-time, in-person learners, which is a directive that we have received from the Department of Education through the granting of authority to the commissioner from the Board of Education at the state level. It's also something that the governor was promoting as well. And so a lot of it happened in a very condensed amount of time. I think the first, I kind of did a chart of all the different meetings and communications. Just meetings alone, from February 24th to tonight, there's been 18 meetings specifically focused on planning for bringing our students back and all of the pieces that go with that. We have tried to communicate all along the way. It's sort of like the summer. I think we spoke, I said it was like Groundhog Day because, again, you get sort of a tickling of a directive that's coming. It's coming, it's coming, but there's not a lot of guidelines for you to start to do some of the planning with. So we continue to sort of evolve and decided early on that we were going to move in the direction of trying to bring our 4th through 12th graders back to full-time, in-person learners. Nothing will change for the pre-K to 3 students, so that's all of the Coombs School and our third graders in this building. Their classes will remain the same. But the two big changes that do allow us to do this is, one, the bus guidelines have changed, and now it allows for two students per seat, and every seat can be filled. So that's going from where we before had about 23 students on a bus to, I think it's about 45 now. So that's one piece, and we will continue to mask, hand sanitize, and keep the windows open on the buses. And obviously, the guidelines only call for the windows to be open and closed, but as the weather gets nicer, they can be opened much more fully. And then the other change that is allowing us to bring back those students 4th through 12th is that the closing of desks in classrooms is now, well, it's always been three to six foot. We chose to go to six feet. There have been studies done in schools that have shown that there was not a marked difference in the spread of COVID positivity numbers with the three-foot versus the six-foot. So that piece is allowing us to shift our students back in. We are still maintaining a six-foot area for teachers to teach in. And this is not going back to traditional teaching pre-COVID. The students will be arranged in single desks. They will all face forward. They will all be masked. They will receive support from teachers, but it won't probably be the same, you know, close proximity support that in a pre-COVID time they would expect to receive. The mass breaks will be taking place outside of the classrooms, in outside areas or in large areas within a building. Snacks in grades four, five, and six cannot happen in the classroom anymore, but the teachers will be taking students to locations where that can happen. And then the lunchrooms for grades four through 12. We are maintaining our six-foot distancing, and the students are all facing the same direction. At the Middle High School, it's all individual desks. And down here at this school, there's some bench seating as well as desks. And we're gonna continue with the bag lunches that are available for free for all students. That's actually something I really like, the way that flows. But so students will still have that opportunity. Nothing will change in that respect for safety. So when we started to plan, we had to look at, we looked at bus transportation. We looked at the Middle High School, particularly with the course enrollments. We had to assess our furniture needs because so many of our desks have been put into the storage units on our campuses. And plus, so many desks are being used in the cafeteria settings, whether it's the gym or the, or the caf, so that we don't have the same availability for classroom desks that we had before. We looked at whether we needed to add some half-days for all of the logistics to happen, and also to give teachers some extra planning time. We developed some communication plans, and again, it's a very condensed activity that we're engaged in compared to when we had the summer last year. We had several months to accomplish a lot of the planning. And maybe that prepared us to be able to pivot a little more quickly right now. But so it's pretty sort of intense, fluid experience right now. So we have done some communication. I think the first communication I sent to families was on the 26th of February, and that was after a commissioner's call on that Wednesday, the 24th, where he basically was hinting to the superintendents, not hinting, but basically saying, I'm requesting this authority from the Board of Education at their next meeting, which all he said at that point is about two weeks away, and it was a little sooner actually than two weeks away. So initially, we started to meet with Joseph Mary Cape, thinking that we were going to do, initially, we were gonna do grade four that first week, grade five the following week, and grade six after the break, because we do want sort of ease everyone back in. And then when the final guidelines came out, we had to include fifth grade in that first group of students on the fifth. So then we looked at it and decided to, we decided on a plan that we're proposing in terms of which grades and putting that when. And then we've continued to sort of work from that model and see what pieces needed to be taken care of to get us to that point. Oh, DPW. Yeah, so of those 18 meetings, we meet regularly with the Association of Tech. This was today, Wednesday. Last week was at least three meetings. We had one this week. We have another one tomorrow. We meet every Wednesday with the DPW. That's a little, it's a little challenging because they're a little short-staffed as well for various reasons. So the night, the maintenance guys are moving desks into classrooms. And we did tell teachers about a week ago to expect to start to see the desks. But what happened, I know recently in this school, is the maintenance puts the desks in, and the custodial team at night is supposed to come back and position them. And apparently, there's been a few classrooms that that did not happen. And so a teacher comes in, you know, and gratefully so, is pretty upset because now everything is not as it should be to start her teaching in the learning day. So we talked to DPW this morning about that as well. They are putting the tents, the canopies back on the tents, which was to be up before April 10th. And like I say, they have moved quite a bit of the furniture. We are short some desks. We have placed an order for additional desks. And we have contracted with the company that will deliver them to actually place them in the classrooms so that we are not burdening the DPW with that desk as well. But it's, it's a hard thing to, you know, move desks in, or particularly with the new desks, which is supposed to be prior to the fifth. It's like moving desks out and then heading them in, so there'll be a little bit of, hopefully, everybody's flexible during that time because it's not likely to be so synchronous that there's no flaws in the plan. We have communicated last week, particularly the details of what an in-person learner, a full-time, in-person learner can expect, and then what a revoked learner's learning will be like. It'll be different than it has been up to this point. And we did survey parents. The survey was closed this morning at 6:30. And at that time, I believe, we had about 200 calls to make, about. So anyone that did not respond to the survey, they have received a phone call today, and if we didn't reach the person, they will get, you know, a follow-up. So as of 6:30 this morning, we had 600 and, well, we had a total of 720 total responses. And that's out of an expected 1,039 in grades four through 12. So today, the staff at each, at the Middle High School and this school started calling families and finding out what choice they were making for the child. So as of this afternoon, we had, we were up to 882 responses, so we still have a few more to go. And of those 882, we have 112 students across grades four through 12 who are choosing 100% remote-only at this point. And we have 770 students choosing to be in-person. So that's 87.3% are choosing in-person, and 12.7% are choosing remote-only. And I know that we've had conversations, and I think you all saw the video, the slide deck as well, trying to fully explain the change with 100% remote learner. For our, nothing changes, like I said, to grades three and home school. But for grades four through 12, it's unrealistic, I think, to, of an expectation to put on teachers who may have 17 students in a classroom and one remote learner to handle that. Because particularly at the Middle High School, when they are zooming with their class, they're really glued to their desktop. They don't have the ability to sort of stand anywhere in the room or stand up when they are clear touch in most of those classrooms. And so hopefully, up at that level, they are being able to provide extra support to students in their period eight. And also, they are expected to build a robust Google Classroom with supports in place there that a student can access for their sort of a more independent learning. Obviously, if someone has to quarantine, or if they have to quarantine students, then all plans would be made to accommodate those students. But again, that will be a little bit more independent learning than it has been up to this point for our remote learners. I don't know, just give a quick scan. Obviously, like Stacy talked about, pool testing. The more students we can get to be participating in the pool testing program will ease a lot of anxiety that our teachers are concerned with. Most of our teachers, I assume, will be vaccinated, but obviously, our students will not. And I think there's a general anxiety among teachers worried about being in a larger group of students. And I, you know, I can't help each individual teacher handle or their anxiety related to that. I prefer to view them as healthy children. That does keep me a little bit more sane than if you view all 17 of them as sort of walking with COVID. So I think if we can, and we haven't had that high positivity rate. So the first pool test next week will be interesting. But really, we want to encourage and hopefully build that program because I think that will give everybody a little bit more ease, ease of mind as we're all getting back together. I think I did, in here, there is a request to add some half-days, which is later on in the meeting. Also, we have some parent in, I'm already in question and answer Zoom meetings next Monday. Monday at 5 o'clock is for grades seven and eight. Monday at 6 o'clock is for grades nine through 12. And the Boshnet School is the following day, on Tuesday, the 23rd, from 6:00 to 6:45. And that's for parents to ask questions, not only related to the academic side, but also if they have a medical question. I believe that we will have some expertise with us in terms of that area. And then there is a chart, I think I shared it separately with the committee. I don't know that it's in your slide cabinet, it's in the packet, the slide deck. And it really just laid out from March 15th all the way till after vacation week, who's in and who's gone. Because keep in mind, we're still co-boarding until after that February, April vacation. That will be the final time that there's any hybrid, I mean, Cal, Calvin, and Ashby cohorts in action. But up until the time that your grade all returns to full-time, you are still hybrid. So does anyone have any questions about this? Very large topic.
Where shall we start? Jeff, do you have any questions?
I do. Two quick ones. I'm interested how the change in three-foot distance changes the close contact tracing.
So it doesn't change anything. We will still be close contact, Stacy says. But we'll still close contact on the trace.
I get that. I meant the.
It's going to increase the number of students who would be considered close contact.
Right, right, because the whole class would be a close contact now, right?
No, no. It's only, so if you.
All right, because they're, I got you. I'm sorry.
Depends on where you sit.
Because they're, yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay.
And Stacy, and also same with on the buses now, the buses will be full. So where it used to be, you know, the diagonal, there were fewer kids, it would be two, the two in the diagonal, the two across, the two, that will be a bigger old slot.
Gotcha. And that segues perfectly with my second question, which is bus monitors.
Sorry, that's beep, I'm sorry to interrupt, just a little-
Oh, no problem.
That's beep back though. Okay. So, go ahead.
How are we doing with bus monitors? It seemed to be even more important though.
We don't have any more than we started with. Um, I know that the first week of school, we, the first, not the first week, when we bring our kids back each week, so April 5th is for grade levels coming back. We are treating each of those first weeks for grade levels as if they're just starting the new year. So we're really wanting to work on building climate culture and welcoming those students back, a little less push on the academics. But for that first week, because we are, we are, um, working with the bus company, they're creating new routes or revising them. From that, then the buses load, like for the first stop, that kid goes to the very back and we load that way. So we, our team will be creating the seating plan. But that first week, it's going to be a challenge for bus drivers to sort of manage that if you don't have a monitor. So we all are going to be running buses that, those weeks to make sure that everything sort of gets established that first week.
We don't have monitors for every bus though.
We do not have monitors. We can continue to search for some, maybe by now there's some, well, maybe those policies to that, but anyways.
Is there a financial thing we can discuss in the later days that may help out or something like that?
Yeah, we did, at least the rate though.
And then the, my last comment's also about buses. I know that the DESI guide said that the windows need to be open, but we need to have a plan for fall weather.
Well, that, I will say though, DESI's guidelines only say this much, so if you look at a lot of the buses that I go by, they don't really look open to me. Like I have to look at them in some cases, so I think they have that little lip that helps a little bit.
Okay.
All right, Kathy, do you have any questions?
Well, Jeff, Jeff got my bus question, so thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
I can come back to you.
Yeah, you know, I-
Yeah, that's fine. Don, do you have any questions at the ready?
So currently roughly 45% of the, um, remote, 100% remote learners are at the high school. Out of the 275, we're going to drop down to, you said, 112, if I under, if I got the number correct.
In grades four to 12.
In grades four to 12. I'm assuming that, uh, majority of those coming back then are coming from the high school and the middle school, which are the biggest chunk of the, of the remote learners? Is that correct?
Um, I haven't, I, I will say, um, I'm not sure, I can't, I can't really make that statement yet. I know in terms of looking at the 100% remotes, there were fewer at the elementary level than there are at the middle school. Not answering your question, but, yeah, we haven't, I mean, we just got all the data in, so I haven't-
Oh, okay. Cause where I was headed was at Quashnet, currently there are 50 students that are, um, remote and that's, you know, roughly 10 to 12 in each of the grades. Have you considered if, if that was the number that actually stayed there? Reorganizing some of the classrooms to put remote learners with a single teacher versus, so that they would have more support versus having them, uh, only get 45 minutes in their current, um, fully, uh, in, um, person classes?
Well, I mean, obviously, we're not going to let any student, student who's a remote learner struggle and fail. We will put some supports in place, but they're not, I mean, in, in that scenario, if they were clustered, that's, that's great. I guess we could make a multi-age remote only classroom, but they're not neatly organized across law for, for the grade law. I don't know if Principal Brian wants to share any insights. I know, I know we've encouraged kids to be coming back as sort of a transition, so I don't know if you have any thoughts you want to share and I don't know if you need that microphone? And there is a wipe after if you use it.
Okay. Hello? Can I do it like this? I guess not.
No, so, so take this-
Center button.
-button in the middle, hold it.
Until it turns blue.
And then the volume is on the side.
That's better?
Just turn your volume up and-
You can't put those two together.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Hi, everyone, it's nice to see you. The students that we have so far that have chosen, or the parents who have chosen the 100% remote, um, they are spread out across multiple classrooms. It's not like they're all in one. Currently, I have a total in grades four, five and six of only 16 students who have chosen the 100% remote. 13 are still unknown. We have calls out to them, but we haven't heard back. So, um, in third grade, we have five students that are remote. Since March, just March 1st, we've had 16 remote students convert to hybrid students. So we've had a large increase of students coming back this month. You can see it at dismissal. That line is a little bit long again, um, and it's been great to welcome these students back. We had a student return today, the first time since March 13th of 2020. And we made the call because we hadn't heard from them about the learning plan and the parent was so excited, said it was her best day ever in school in all of her career. She was so happy to be back and she, can she just stay full-time now? It, it's just been really positive when the, the kids come back. It's been absolutely wonderful. But, um, 16 just since March 1st and today's the 17th, Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Jeff, that raises an interesting question because I know we struggled with dismissal under even the hybrid kind of, so how is that gonna, how are you gonna adjust with all your students back?
Oh, I'm hoping they'll be on the buses.
Yeah.
The buses should be full now and where they were not before. So we're hoping most students will be going back onto buses. And I know we've received several calls, um, asking about the new bus routes and what times and that's coming, that will be out, I believe, toward the end of the month. But, um, hopefully they will be getting on buses. And if not, we'll make those adjustments.
And when we make the seating plans on our buses, every student is getting in time to see whether their parent decides to continue driving them or always drive them. So whatever the scenario is, we are always going to be ready then for our 100%, um, ridership on the buses.
Don, did you have an additional question?
No, I, I, I think that answers my question because the group now will be so small that you don't have a cohort in any particular grade that would, you can put together with a teacher by themselves, so.
It would have to be multi-grade. It would not be, if we had 20 students in one grade level, it would be different, but it's- And even the 13 that are unknown, out of those at this point, um, I don't have the exact number, but the majority of them are already hybrid. I'm just waiting for that confirmation that they are going to choose because the condition is changing from the six feet to the three. So I don't want to make an assumption.
So just to clarify, of the responses, so Patty said there were 720 as of this morning out of an expected 1039. You're saying after today's calls, you only have 13 kids in the whole Quashnet School that have not decided?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes. I have to shout out to my office staff, they're absolutely amazing and very efficient. Got right to it and, um, in fact, I just took the call right before the school committee meeting where a parent was returning that call. So we were on it right at, I think it was 9:05.
Yeah, so this morning, when we had the survey closed, Mary Kate was at about two students in each of the grade levels, four, five and six, and might have been one with a three. And that was going into before all the calls were made, so it doesn't surprise me that she landed with 16, if that makes sense for where you were.
So is it safe to assume though, that, like, so the, the Coombs has been, you know, full-time, the whole time? Is, are, are there people shifting out of remote even though essentially, you know, what you're changing is the remote model? So are they coming back to for that reason?
Yeah, so, uh, right now, as of today, we only have 24 students remote in the entire building and that was down from 44 from long time, I believe, last time that Dr. Goulart reported out. So as of today, we have 24 remote learners in the entire building.
Okay.
Kids are coming back.
That, that are coming back?
Yep.
They're staying remote or they're-
Kids are coming back into the building.
Okay. I don't know if everyone can hear that on, uh, on the Zoom, but-
So what, what Brian said is at Coombs School, at the last report that Principal Goulart gave, there were 44 remote, 100% remote learners at Coombs. And as of today, they are, they have 24 remote learners at Coombs.
We've even been returning third grade students too on a pretty regular basis. I think part of it is when, um, the idea to bring all the students back, those students who haven't been here since March, the families are saying they want them to come in a smaller setting before all of the students are back at one time. So that's where we've been getting so many of the calls. I, I would imagine Brian here might be getting the same type, well, cause you're all, already all in, so.
Yeah. We, we get request, I know, you know, we can hear me, but we, we get requests every once in a while to do a tour with the kid and the family, but after school hours, um, that we, that we make accommodations for. So if the kid's a little nervous or if the parent is a little nervous about it, um, so after school hours, um, when the parent, like when everybody's gone, um, myself or Dr. Goulart, the building principal, will take them on a quick tour just to see, answer questions and then go. It's usually about five minutes, um, but just to like, you know, ease anxieties and support the families.
Um, I had a couple of additional questions and not necessarily for you, Mary Kate, but just based on the superintendent's report. So, um, now that we're going to have more kids in-
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I thought it was me for a second. So how does the additional desks for like meals and things like that impact gym and the other activities that take place in the shared spaces?
So the gymnasium's pretty much, for the gym classes, they have to go outside.
So-
We're taking more of that space.
Right. So from here on out, they'll be going outside for gym?
Pretty much. The tent, once the tent's up, you can do it under the tent if it's foul weather, but as in other years, sometimes they haven't been able to use the gym, so they're pretty creative employees to still get some physical activity in when they can't go outside. But hopefully, you know, after the pending snowstorm on Friday, we'll be all set for the rest of the year.
Yeah, well, don't hold your breath. So will kids be able to leave items in school now? Or are we still going to send sixth graders home with 20-pound backpacks?
We still want kids taking their materials back and forth because we still don't know in a particular class. We might find out some information as far as that, so remote, um, on any given night. And not that it can't be arranged for pickup, but we just feel it's better for parents to continue with that practice. We probably will have students start to bring back the beach towel concept because obviously more in this school particularly are going to need to take, you know, a mask break possibly sitting down. That's why you see a lot of people in school, they, right in a sunny spot and sit down. But, or you can take a mask break by movement too. But yes, they are going to take their materials back and forth.
I gotta tell you, I don't know if I can fit a towel in that backpack right now.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I'm serious, it is, it is so full and they just got another binder last week from a different teacher that they have to keep separate from their other binder. And I thought, if you're going to make kids bring their stuff back and forth each day, at least let them put everything in one binder and, you know, so I think, um, first thing my kid said to me was like, oh, at least we won't have to carry everything back and forth, so.
Well, I assume you're talking about Quashnet School students, so-
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about elementary kids.
I think the conversation with the teachers, because they team teach about combined binder is realistic.
Yeah.
Principal Brian.
I think that would be helpful.
Dooley, not me.
Maybe she's getting big muscles from it, I don't know. Let's see, the other thing, oh, at the high school, is the block schedule gonna continue?
For the rest of this year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that won't change?
No.
Let me see, has, um, the Board of Health weighed in on any of these changes?
Yes, Stacy and I met with Caitlin and Glenn from the Nashvii Board of Health. We went over everything that we had planned and all the protocols and practices in place and they supported our plan. Correct, Stace?
Correct. And all, everything stays in place. To Mr. Gorman's question about contact tracing, really what changes is how we look at who's closer than six feet. There will be more close contact potential identification if we have a positive, but it's, nothing truly changes from the contact tracing or to health perspective as long as you're following these guidelines and have it continue to be monitored in an ongoing way, so that will continue.
So I guess the, the real disadvantage though is without the, the, the current remote learning model, when more kids have to be quarantined as close contacts or stay home, they'll only have this 45 minutes of asynchronous learning even if they're not sick. Is that correct?
That is correct until the testing has been in place. But like we said, the teachers' landing pages, Google Classroom, they need to provide adequate, um, whether it's embedded videos or themselves video, they need to ensure that a student is able to navigate that without struggling and that they need to be available if a student is, um, not having a successful day.
I only have one more question on that if you have anything else. My last question is on the slide, on nine of the packet, um, you know, part of the slide deck that you shared with parents.
Yeah.
Um, you talk about the 100% remote learning and expectations, you know, clarifying that. In, in red, it says if they start as a remote learner, um, and you want to go full-time in person later, that it could take a four to six week timeframe for that transition to occur. What about the reverse? What if, um, people go back in person and they want to become remote learners after, you know, being back 100% in person for a few weeks? Does that happen instantly or does it-
Yes, that does not.
Okay.
But that is a one-time change, you know, if they decide to do that. I did have a conversation with one parent and these are the guidelines from DESI and different, I mean, it's, it's broad because different districts have different situations that they're dealing with. I think within Nashvii, do I think that we would be close to a four-week timeframe probably? But we wanted to make sure parents understand that it is not an immediate turnaround to make that change.
Right. I just wanted to clarify what happened on the flip side. Yeah.
So can you repeat that answer? Cause I was spacing off. At least I'm honest.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So if, if, okay, first point was if you are choosing to be 100% in person or full-time and you then want to go remote, that is an easy switch. That can be done, you know, by the next day. You can't come back once you make that change without having a waiting period. But if it's the other way, that you're starting out with 100% remote and you decide, I do want my child to be full-time in person, that is not an immediate switch. And according to DESI, we are allowed, we are allowed to, um, it could take four to six weeks depending on the district to make that happen or depending on what learning plan is in place. So like I said, I do anticipate it being a quicker process in Nashvii, but it's not an overnight process or even the same week. So folks will get mad at me for altering from the four to six, but-
So in regard to a student who is full-time in person and then decides that's not working and wants to go remote, that is a one-time choice for this school year only, correct?
For the rest of this school year.
For the rest of this-
Not an in and out.
Right, they can't go back and forth and it's not going to be available next year based on the, the current guidance that we have, correct?
Right. According to the Department of Education, remote learning will not be an option next year.
Right. Okay.
Okay, a second ago, you said not without a waiting period. So you're saying it, we, we come, we come back mid-April, someone starts April 18th or whatever that week is, um, and they decide they want to go remote. And then, uh, at the end of, I don't know, a month later, or no, say they're home for two weeks and they're like, never mind, they can't come back in. You're, or, or are they just subject to that four to six week waiting period?
Four to six weeks, yes.
So that's different than what?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not that they're banned. Okay.
No, I, I-
Just can't flip back.
Yeah, it's just not a, it's not a revolving door. Yeah.
Yeah, I missed that part, sorry.
Okay. I do have a question for Mr. Bellistraci, I think, in regard to, looks like the remote morning at the high school in grades 10 and 12 went up quite a bit from February to March. Is that correct?
That went from hybrid to remote?
No, they went from, um, the, I'm looking at page 14. So if you look at the numbers for 100% remote, for the C, for grade 12, went from 29 to 36. And for grade 10, went from 31 to 39.
Yes, so I think there was a shift when we sent the email out for families to, on their hybrid weeks, to start attending in person to start that transition. We made it very clear that if you were supposed to be in person and you weren't, you could still log on to the Zoom, but your attendance would not be counted for that particular class. As a result of that, many parents chose to change their learning model to fully remote in that instant to be able to get the attendance for logging on. Since then, those have changed dramatically. I made 36 calls personally today, and almost everyone that I spoke to is excited to be in person. So that was maybe the impetus for that quick shift so quickly in that short time.
Okay.
That is the reason for that, because we had a lot of communication from families who didn't like that expectation that if it's your in-person week, you'd be here and the only way you were going to be able to access your learning was if you decided to be 100% remote learner, so they shifted.
I must be the only one who didn't use, like, take vacations on the remote weeks. I thought we actually had to be home for those.
You had to be home somewhere.
Somewhere, wow.
Yeah.
The other question was in regard to grade 12. I'm assuming that as of today, you have a high number that are coming back?
Yes.
To complete the school year, is that correct?
Yes, right now, it's all but I think eight or 10, off the top of my head. Almost all of them are back. I had a meeting on Thursday of last week with all the seniors socially distanced in the auditorium. It was probably the best moment of the school year. And kids were in tears of joy. They haven't seen each other, many of each other in a year. And it was a really, for the first time, you see, you saw some hope in the kids' eyes that we could kind of get back to something normal. And it was just really probably one of the most rewarding experiences I've had all year, getting all those kids together. So it was really great.
Today, when I was up at the high school in the gymnasium cafeteria, I think, yes, and there were many more kids, but the two lunch ladies who were waiting to go in and wipe down after that lunch said, "Did something go on?" Because we have had to make so many more bag lunches this last week. I'm like, maybe.
That's a good problem to have.
I would say yes, yeah, yeah.
If I could just get one of my kids to eat a bag lunch, I'd be very...
Well, and they're really, today's bad lunch.
I know.
Ash potatoes.
I have no doubt that they're good.
They were good last week.
Bad lunches in Nashbee are like, normally take that one.
Yeah, I know. All right, Kathy?
You guys kind of covered them all, like I crossed them off as you were answering. You got to my two, Nicole, really with the dismissal and drop-off. That was kind of one of my concerns, but I think, you know, if the number increases, I guess it sounds like that's something that's being anticipated and looked at anyway. So, because that was one of my questions. And then you got my remote learner transition back question, Nicole, because that four to six week, I was kind of looking at that and just wondering. But you kind of covered that as well, so yeah, I'm good.
Okay. I think I speak for all of us when I say thank you for all the work that you've done in planning this with your team and good luck.
That's all right.
And thank you for all the answers to all my questions. Somehow blurred the line between parent and school committee member, but, and, and thanks to Riva too, who got back to me and, you know, I think I'm probably not the only parent who had a little bit of anxiety about this. And, you know, I just feel like we finally got our arms around the current model, so. But I agree with you that I think, and to the point Mark made, I think, you know, kids want to be with each other and around their buds and see everybody. So I hope that, I hope that it all goes well.
They were all pretty happy in the cafeteria. I talked to most of them. They're upbeat.
All right.
Any other questions on that?
I don't think so. I think we're on to recognitions.
The only recognition I wanted to do is really, and Stacy already handled it, was the partnership with the tribe and Dr. Kelsey Sim. That has really been a joyful experience. I know it's been a lot of work on Stacy in terms of the logistics to really be helpful with the tribe. I'm very, very grateful for that. The principals share outs, you each have like three minutes if you want to share any thoughts about anything.
Sure, you want to go first?
So, yes. So Dr. Goulart is not here tonight, so. She is here via Zoom, and we have Sister Principal Prentice.
He's kind of like a giant Paula Bell.
It's nice to see you in person, finally.
I know, right? I don't think I've met, I don't think I've ever seen any of you in person.
Yeah, we, I don't think I've met you yet. If you'd like that.
Hi, so I'm Brian Prentice, I'm the Sister Principal at KCC. Great to see everybody. Let's see, so like, like I said before, we have...
Hang on one second. So that actually has to face us so I can hear you.
I don't want to just talk to myself?
Yeah. Mic us this way, yeah, and then just make sure the volume's all the way up, but not near your microphone.
It's like an old-school walk.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you hear it out?
Yes.
All right, great. So like I was saying before, we've had a decrease in the number of kids that are remote learning. So we're down to 24 kids in the entire building that are remote learning. It's been great to see the kids in the building, interacting with one another. So it's been great overall. I know the teachers are really excited too to have the kids back in front of them, not through screens, so it's been good all around. Some things that we have coming up. We have a cool thing happening on the 22nd called Rock Your Socks at KCC. Rock Your Socks is from a parent at KCC. Her name is actually Sarah Rocks. And she puts this event on every year, and it's to raise awareness about World Down Syndrome Day. So on Monday, we're actually going to celebrate this and people are going to work, you know, rock your socks and raise awareness for World Down Syndrome Day. Please feel free to participate as well, put it on your Twitter, and, you know, connect it to us too. I think that'd be fantastic. If you'd like a flyer too, it'll be on my Twitter page as well, or I can just provide you one whenever you want. So recently, we had some, some things happen in the building where myself and Dr. Goulart had been quarantined, so we were out of the building. So I just wanted to say, we wanted to say thanks for Central Office, Jamie, people coming over and supporting us while we were out and zooming into meetings, doing our lunch duties, doing our traffic duties. I don't know if anybody actually did traffic duty. Oh, okay, thank you, Patty. And it was absolutely wonderful. Things went great and it really kind of made me feel good as like a new person in the district that things are really actually, things are really connected. And people are really looking for the success of everybody, not just being in the building, which was great. Also, the reason why things ran so smoothly is our office staff. Our office staff are incredible. They, they're actually all new as well. We had Ms. Fisher move over to the central office, which is awesome. And she actually was able to train one of, the person that took her job over, over at KCC, Susan Cheklik, who's been phenomenal, was able to do everything for us, as well as Cindy Papa and Shannon Lee, who are all new, but ran things really smoothly and connected with us when we needed to. We're also excited to announce that we have a school-wide Zoom assembly coming up. It's going to be by Brian Richard, and he's going, Richard, who's going to be doing magic, comedy, and storytelling to talk about anti-bullying, let's see, trustworthiness, respect, and all of kind of like really good character values. And that's going to be available to kids that are also remote, as well as everybody in the building will be able to zoom in, and it's going to be interactive. Big shout out to Ms. Blackburn, who's a preschool teacher who found that. And then she brought that to the PTO, who, and the PTO is actually going to fully fund that for us, which is wonderful. And then I think the last, okay, so one more thing is, our PTO is going to be putting on a dance-a-thon later in the spring as our fundraiser, which we can't wait. It's going to be fantastic. We're not quite sure how we're going to pull it off yet, whether it's going to be in the classrooms, outside, but we'll work out those logistics and we'll let you guys know. And got me thinking about the transportation stuff, where we've also been working periodically with our, with our parent drop-off in the morning, where it can be pretty busy, as Patty can attest to if she's standing outside directing traffic. So we've been working really hard with the bus company, making sure that things are really safe and making sure everybody's doing the right thing, and parents would really appreciate it, so. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't have any. Jeff?
No, I can't.
I can't see you back there. I need like a mirror.
Well, thank you so much. It was nice seeing everybody in person.
Thanks, yes.
Brian, are you off too?
No. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Paul Jr.
You know what, Brian, I think you're going to hold out, but I think...
I thought, she's called me Paul, or Giant Paul.
I said he's a giant.
I thought she called me Giant Paul.
Giant Paul.
Yeah, chaotic, fair-tested, complicated.
I think, I think it was the color of the song or something.
Hi, everyone again. It's good to see you. And it just sounds so great, like we're getting back to school a little bit more normally, and that's really exciting. I do have to share, our Quasnet School Student Council this year is really doing an amazing job. They have been meeting every Thursday night through Zoom, and they have come up with some of the greatest things. And one of the things they launched is the Falcon Flyer. I don't know if you've seen it, but they've really done a great job by sharing the weather, school news. It's like our morning announcements, but they've also included some world news. And they have a joke of the day. So we're trying to be very careful with some of these things, but they really have worked very hard. They've done a great job. And now they're including podcasts. So we hope to work with Consuelo to get those down to the hashtag #WeAreNashbeeStore and just highlight the work that these kids are doing. They really are outstanding. So it's, it's been really fun to watch that. They are also participating, along with our K kids, in a food drive that is coming up in partnership with Nashbee Middle High School and Sean Smith specifically, that starts on March 20th and goes through April 3rd. And I was a little worried, we wanted to do a food drive earlier in the year and the food pantry was not taking canned foods. But Sean did that research, and they are going to accept that. So the student council and the K kids have jumped right on board. In fact, they're going to be interviewing Sean as part of their podcast presentations and bring that to our school. So we're very excited about that. The student council, I have also been those kindness ninjas that have carried over since January, and they've been making kindness rocks. And they've delivered a whole slew of them to Lauren Todd already. And they'll be showing up in various locations around our community, but they really have followed that well. Another initiative, I told you, these kids are incredibly busy and it's really terrific, is the student council has created this Week of the World, and it's to bring an awareness of different regions of our world and different ethnicities and cultures. And they met with Gus Stickley and have designed a menu from different regions. And the student council will put together different videos that we'll share at lunch. And then they're going to be there to answer any questions and present information about that region. And that's going to take place the first two weeks in April. So Gus was really excited, and he said, "That will be great, but I'm going to have a second choice." And I'm like, "That's fine, whatever, whatever it is he's going to be making." But he does have some couscous salad prepared and some different recipes that he's ready to share with the kids, so we're really looking forward to that. And as always, I just have to shout out to our teachers and our staff here at Quasnet. They are working so hard to meet the needs of all of their students. And they're carrying a tremendous weight because they take such responsibility for every one of their learners. And I just appreciate every moment and all that they do. They really have worked hard. So thank you to them. And certainly to our parents who are always there supporting the kids and getting them here on time and waiting in those lines patiently out front. We are trying to move those lines quickly, but with the increased number of cars and people who haven't been in the traffic before or in a long time, it's kind of getting them used to the routine. Don't get out of that car, just stop, don't slow down, stop, let the children out, and then go. Just teaching them how to do that. So overall, it seems and feels like we're getting back to normal somewhat. We did have a Big Spirit Day on March 12th where we wore our Quasnet, hashtag Quasnet Strong t-shirts. And almost every single student and staff member in this building had on their blue shirts. It was a beautiful day outside. You would think it was like the day before vacation. Everyone was happy. They, it really felt like such a team. It was such a great feeling in the building and really great energy. And we appreciated that. And I told the kids, it's not like we were celebrating a year, but we were recognizing all the work that has been done in the last year since our closure. One full year of really hard work that no one has ever done before. And everyone needed to have, take a minute and recognize what they've done to get through this, so. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Kate.
I'm not going to put that near. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Excellent, same thing.
Yeah, I have to turn.
Excellent, thank you.
I hope Stacy was lucky.
Ladies and vice chair, members of the committee, a couple of quick updates, obviously, a lot of balls in the air right now with all the planning and preparation to return to in-person learning. But a couple of really great highlights to share. I think as we came into the school year with all the restrictions and constraints of COVID, many folks were kind of talking about, you know, how are we going to make things happen for kids? How are we going to still provide the best opportunities for our students each and every day? And instead of just kind of mailing it in and saying, "Oh, we just can't do it," our student staff and support personnel have gone above and beyond to really kind of help provide more opportunities. And just a couple of quick ones to highlight. I want to thank Mike Looney, Cara Galvin O'Donnell from Mass Hire and the Cape Cod Islands Workforce Investment, Workforce Board. They have worked together, the Mass Hire has worked with us collaboratively to provide a mentoring program at the middle-high school level. And it's where we pair a 12th-grade student with a 7th or 8th-grade student who may need some support, tutoring, just, you know, some encouragement, things like that, as well as some classrooms where, you know, upperclassmen are going in and providing additional just support throughout the entire class period. The great thing about this is that it is a paid internship. So all of our students who are engaged, I think we have 22 right now overall, we have up to 30 possible seats. We had a great informational session with all of our seniors, and they really jumped at this. And not just because it's $13.50 an hour, which is a solid, it's all a little wage here to be in school and helping someone. But we required them to apply for it. And when we asked them to apply, one of the questions was, you know, "Why do you really want to do this?" And, you know, we really wanted to make sure they were in it for the right reasons and were really grounded in that. And, you know, in reading them, I know Mr. Looney brought them down to my office immediately, and it was just amazing to see what these kids and why they wanted to get back. And one student in particular stood out where he had come from another district in the middle school in 8th grade, and he said, "I really want to do this because I wish I had that, and I would have done a lot better early on." So this is just, again, an opportunity where not only it's great for all of our kids, but this is going to help us build the groundwork for really establishing a robust mentoring program. So that's something that we definitely want to move forward with. And that's one of the positives here of a COVID school year. And also having a block schedule where you have a period eight where students can get that additional support during the school day. I think that's been one of the big saving graces for many of our students is that they utilize that time and they have it built in every other day to their schedule. Another opportunity that we're super excited about, I just had a meeting with the host... Another opportunity that we're super excited about, I just had a meeting with the HOSA Club, which is our Health Occupation Students of America Club, which is run by Ms. Purdy and Joyce O'Connor, our school nurse, and we have been able to kind of really start brainstorming how we want to get our health services pathway up and running. You guys all know that we got that amazing grant, thanks to Dr. Hanscom and Mr. Looney, for getting the Skills Capital Grant for $250,000, in which we were able to purchase all that amazing industry-grade equipment, including the beautiful ambulance simulator, which we just had a senior, I'll highlight her right now, Abby Norman, pass her EMT test and was using that stuff and that material. So it's already up and running with a few kids. What we're actually going to be doing this spring is providing, you know, up to 10 students who are, you know, primarily in HOSA, who are looking for an opportunity or a career in health services, and we're actually going to be offering, starting this spring in period eight, solely upon them if they'd like to do it, there's no pressure in any way, but we're going to actually offer an online medical terminology course for those students interested, just so we can get, you know, the ball moving and the program up and running. We had an excellent meeting today, and it'll be an online program through our online platform that we use, Agenuity, but it's also going to be supervised not just by Mr. Looney and myself and Mrs. Purdy, but also one of our substitute teachers and a former Mashpee alum, Kripani Patel, who is in medical school right now, and she also substitutes at the middle high school. She's a great kid, and I can't think of anybody better than to have a Mashpee graduate teaching and supervising and helping those students with that course. So again, just a couple of quick things. Lastly here, just, you know, Kaylee Green is our girls volleyball coach, varsity coach, and I do want to give her a shout out. She is new to us, has an administrative assistant in the main office at MMHS, and she's also the part-time assistant to the athletic director. So if you do anything athletics-related, you've seen her name, but she has really just brought that program up immediately from where it was as a club sport, and that they're competing, they got their first program win, it was really an awesome thing. And I was able to get to a couple of the practices in one of the games last week, and the enthusiasm is unbelievable. And two of the juniors that really pushed to get volleyball going, I was walking down the hall, we had one today, and we were just talking about the legacy that that student's going to leave, that she was able to get volleyball here. And so thank you to the committee, the superintendent, the board, Mr. Trevary, for all your support in that. And then just finally, I want to give a huge shout out to our school counselors, who, when the word came down from the commissioner that we were going to have to go back to this full-time in-person learning, I immediately went to the 297 individual class sections that we have, the middle high school level, and I may have gotten stressed a little bit. And when I went in and looked at the maximum number at all the courses to get the three feet distance between the desks, it was all set. We had barely any, if one or two right now that may be displaced, but we don't have the remote numbers back yet. So for our counselors to have that foresight, to be really proactive in how they plan, even with a semester change, is phenomenal, and just something that's very, very helpful for us moving forward. And then our administrative assistants, they made over 200 phone calls today in three hours. They are amazing, and they do it without batting an eye, they do it with joy, and they get to interact and be positive with our families. So one huge shout out to them. And then our teachers, you know, we continue to work, they've been phenomenal to be with and work with, they're looking at opportunities as opposed to roadblocks, and I'm excited for getting these kids back in, as are they. We have a lot more in the last two weeks, and it's been really positive. For the first time in a long time, there's energy in the building, and not, you know, not energy that I'm having to provide, but energy from the kids and from everybody else. So we're getting there, so for sure, but I'm grateful that Mashpee's leading the way with this, you know, we're going to get ahead of it all. We were proactive in our planning, and superintendent board's an excellent job, assistant superintendent Hanson, everybody's done an excellent job leading us and allowing us to be effective in our roles. So I'm excited. Getting those kids back is really what it's all about and why we do this job. So to see them and not see a tile with a name on it on Zoom is much preferred. I saw one student today I had never met, and it was awesome. And we talked like 19 times throughout the day, so it was just really, really positive. So I'm excited, and that's about it.
Since we don't have a tribal representative here tonight, do you want to talk about the grade seven?
Absolutely. So I don't, yeah, I don't want to take it away from them, it's an exciting opportunity. So as you know, for grade seven students at MMHS, they all go through a language exploration or exposure to languages, French, Mandarin, and Spanish. And what we're able to do this spring in association with the WLRP, Jen Weston, Tracy Kelly, Melanie Roderick, among others, and Tana Greendale, we've been able to now offer, starting the fourth term of the year, 7th grade Wapunak rotation. So now, as we start this in the spring, kind of a pilot, kind of see how it goes and see how the exposure is, and then hopefully next fall, we'll be able to run that as a fourth language exposure opportunity for all 7th grade students. So just phenomenal example of the relationship that we've continued to build, and again, we're getting our vaccines there this week. I mean, it's just a phenomenal thing, and I cannot thank the leadership of the tribe, as well as their education department, and the folks that are in our school right now offering tutoring supports, additional services, and just tremendous resources. So it's really a great opportunity for all of our kids, native and non-native. And it's also going to remain, it's not going to be so much of the language, it'll be more so of the alphabet, which is significantly different, and there's many, many characters, obviously, and then more of the cultural piece. So it's really going to help our students, as they get into the middle high school, learn that culture and be able to understand, be empathetic in understanding of what goes on and what's gone on in Mashpee for many, many years.
Thank you. I'm so excited about that. And we also learned yesterday that there's some grade two teachers that are working on a curriculum to incorporate the Wapunak culture, and so I think it's going to be really nice to have something at the middle school level that really picks up that thread for all of our non-native students as well, as you said. Looking back, any questions? From my...
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
I don't see that we have AZ Trevary here. I wanted him to just share a little bit about spring sports. Does anyone have any questions about spring sports? Well, I won't say spring sports, it's fall two.
Fall two. I can answer most of them if you have them, fall two.
Football, volleyball, cheering, and...
Track.
Track.
Is it just the varsity programs that are competing against other schools, or the junior varsity also in the middle school?
Yeah, so we are playing all levels. So there might be obviously a few less games, we're playing league opponents and local opponents, so I think that's a part of, you know, it's going to be a few less games, but yes, all the levels will participate in track. You know, middle school students participate at the high school level for indoor track.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have Consuelo through the Zoom. I just wanted Consuelo to pick a couple of things to highlight from the last meeting, some of your work or meetings.
All right. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you guys. I just wanted to share a fun story. We have our senior Carolyn Raver was accepted at Wentworth, and she went to Accepted Students' Day, and they, when she went in, they asked for her name, and she said Carolyn Raver, and they said Carolyn Raver from Mashpee? And she's like, "Yes." And they're like, "You're the dog bandanna girl." They had picked up the story that Ian had written in the Mashpee Enterprise, and they had put it in the admissions. The admissions had picked it up, so everyone at Wentworth knew who she was. And I have to say, that sort of expands our connected community, because I got to meet Ian, our new reporter personally from the Mashpee Enterprise, and he actually happened to know somebody at admissions at Wentworth, so sent them the story, and they ended up putting it all over the college, so that was very exciting for her, and I think really kind of a cool thing that we're making it into Boston. So that was really one story I wanted to share, and just Carolyn has been really great as an intern in the store. She's been making the dog bandanas, we've been selling quite a few of those. As a matter of fact, somebody asked for some Easter bandanas for their dogs, and she came right in and made a new design, so we printed those up. And the only other, the other things that I just wanted to highlight is that with the Mashpee Commons, our collaboration is growing. They were generous enough to allow our AP students to put their artwork up in the Talbets Women's, and it's been up all month. And then as well, we are working on a project, the art teachers are working with their students at the Mashpee Middle High School to produce 20 posters that will be up in the stores for Easter. And we have also started printing up, we're using the 3D printer now in the We Are Mashpee Store, we're printing some little eggs. So during Easter, they're going to have an event at the Commons, and the kids can come around, anybody who has one of those posters will be giving away treats. So We Are Mashpee, we're going to be giving away some of the 3D printed eggs. So that's just some of the fun things that are going on. I could go on forever, but I know that would torture all of you, so thank you so much. Do you guys have any questions?
Consuelo, could you just take a couple minutes to highlight our meeting with MashpeeTV and the whole push towards the hard deal?
Absolutely. So the MashpeeTV has upgraded the software and the hardware up at the Mashpee Middle High School, and those upgrades will make the process of uploading and managing the Mashpee, the cable station, much easier and better for us. We're in the process of developing a plan to make a better use of Channel 22. My hope is that we have a liaison, at least one, if not multiples, in each building. They will upload content, I will then sort of review it and schedule it. MashpeeTV will be giving us blocks of time. We haven't decided exactly what those are. I'm thinking like around 7:00 in the evening would probably be more prime time for our families, because at that point, they've probably stopped running around and could actually sit down and watch something. So we will be putting things up, you know, the basic ones that have already been there, like graduation, but I'd like to start doing consistently more things like the school plays, STEM nights, you know, math night, just some of those activities. We're also producing as a district, a lot more content, both student-oriented, as well as, you know, teachers themselves are also creating content. So I'm really excited to see that grow and develop and become another way in which we're showing the community what exciting things are going on in Mashpee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So moving down the agenda here on my oral, so it's in the packet, there's a personnel update, I guess to be self-explanatory, the enrollments, page 14 of the packet, and granted that, you know, we captured it as of the 11th, there's a lot of moving parts in here right now, so take it, I guess, for what it is, it'll be much different next, the next month's report. Let's see, Mr. Shem, who's next? Oh, so proposed amendments to the school year 2021 district calendar, which is on slide eight, but that's page 10, page 10 of your schedule. Do you see the slide that talks about the half-days?
I do.
Yep. So we are proposing or requesting approval for adding three half-days to the this year's school calendar, Friday, March 26th, Friday, April 2nd, and Friday, April 16th. I will say that the April 16th one is primarily designed to more easily facilitate the scheduling of the second dose of the vaccine for so many of our employees, but also workday for teachers in the afternoon. So we would need you to consider that. One question?
What does this do as far as impacting the length of the school year?
Nothing.
Nothing?
We will have to add the requirement for that day, like any of the other half-days. As you recall, we had about a half-day a month built into this calendar year, but then when we did the 10 days at the beginning of the school year, we revised the calendar and took most of those out.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a change to the school calendar to make the following three days of the half-days, March 26th, April 2nd, and April 16th of 2021.
Okay. Don makes the motion. Anyone second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. Any discussion? Kathy, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I also say yes.
Thank you.
Pass. Summer learning.
So on page 18 of the packet is sort of an overview of what we're planning to put together. I will say it's sort of, you know, a 10,000-point view at this point, because we're focused on a little other topic right now, but this is the plan, and we want to make sure we do get it out to families so that they know it will be available. And the proposed budget, this is actually looking at doing this for two years.
The budget that is listed is for one year, but yes, we are.
Yep, so the budget is for one year that you see at the bottom, and probably...
But it's the senior budget.
Right, it's a two-year, you know, it's a two-year program, and it's really going to focus on literacy and mathematics, but in a project-based, engaging way.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it, what basis did you use for the student, like the anticipated need?
It's not, there will be recommendations given to families for students' need to attend, but it's not going to be a requirement.
I mean, this budget is it based on having X number of students? Like, what did you use to estimate, like, where kids are at right now, or?
No, but it's open to everyone, not to the one teacher. So how teacher can follow for each grade level? Sorry, I don't have the mic.
It's open to everyone, and the budget was developed based on the number of teachers we projected we would need at each grade level.
I just wondered if, what would cause these numbers to change? Is it more need or less need, or?
We were conservative in our projections, so I don't anticipate needing more money under any circumstances, less money potentially.
Got it. Yes, Don?
I'm assuming that really there's not going to be any 12th grade students taking a summer class, is that correct?
Hope not.
I hope not. So it's really open to K through 11, is that correct?
So the high school actually, this is open to, so it shouldn't say K to 12, it's actually K to 8, because the high school runs its own summer school program that kids access through Mr. Looney, that's a whole different model. This is, and so it should have said K to 8.
So it's K to 8.
Yes.
And, okay. Do you have an approximate number of students that this was based on?
That's what Nicole was asking. We were conservative and based it on teachers, not students, and it was about, I think it was four teachers for each grade level, or two? I don't remember, to be honest. I just know at the high, at the middle school, 7 and 8, we had four teachers per grade, one for English, one for math, one for science, one for social studies. Even though we're focusing on ELA and math, we wanted to make sure that we had folks who could also enrich and catch up on some of those content areas. But I believe it's two at the other, yeah, actually, is that right? Two at the other grades, K to 6, plus paraprofessionals for two for each grade level, and a counselor for each building area. So one counselor for K to 3, no, K to 2, sorry, a counselor for 3 to 6, and a counselor for 7 and 8, plus a nurse for the whole program.
So the only effect on the budget goes to snack, right?
Correct.
And that's the only place where I'd be, that I think anybody would be interested for the number of students to participate? It's just a ballpark figure of?
So I took that from Camp Falcon. In, yeah.
And can I get a clarification on the dates? It says Tuesday through Thursday. Does that include the dates in July? Because August 1st is not a Tuesday, Thursday.
No, that's supposed to be August 12th. I'm super good at purring.
Ken?
So, hold on. What, the Tuesday through Thursday, July 6th through 8th, and then there's a break, and then it's July 20th through August 12th?
Correct.
The break is for the executive institute for the superintendent for that week at the high school, the middle week. The break is for the executive institute for the superintendent for that week at the high school, the middle week.
That seems about.
Is it typical to provide transportation for summer? But we're able to do that because this is COVID funding?
It is typical to provide transportation for extended school year services through IUPs.
Yeah.
But not for something like this, which is open to M and M. But we felt in order to reach the kids we really want to reach, that it was like a non-negotiable for us to provide transportation.
So that number is not based on students?
The num, no.
Transportation number?
That's a, that's an estimate based on.
Based on all routes. So we don't know where those routes are going to be because we don't know the students. So that's an all-in, if we have to run the buses like we would essentially during the school year, at a daily rate.
I see. Okay. So like you said, conservative.
Very conservative.
Yeah, okay. All right, any more questions? Kathy? Okay. All right. I think Ashley is up, Patty, if you're done?
I'm done, thank you.
I mean, finished? Okay. Ashley, you have a mic? I feel rude having you talk to my back, but this is my bad.
It's COVID friendly.
Yeah.
And Stacy's watching.
Yeah.
All right, my blue light is on. All right. So for the FY21 budget, we're still at pace. We are looking at it in all of our accounts. You'll most likely have savings in our salaries for the year. We're not spending at the rate that we normally would be outside of COVID in any of our substitute lines. And our student activities are going to be lower this year. We're doing an internal review of all those accounts, so I'll have more information at the next meeting. Also, at the end of March, I'll be meeting with the town hall to go over COVID expenditures. So there'll most likely be some changes, whether it's in the general fund or in our other COVID accounts. Whether things will be moving off our books into the town's COVID money or from the COVID money, town's COVID money into ours. So I'll keep you updated for our next meeting. We're going to be doing more of a hard close in March, so we can see where we are and we can project the last three months of the year. There were about 15 questions that were said to me over the last couple of weeks about the January and February expenditures. All that information is posted online. Are there any additional questions for the FY21 budget?
Jeff, do you have any questions?
I do not. I read the responses. I appreciate it.
Kathy?
No, thank you. We're done for those people.
No, I'm good. Thank you for those responses also.
Don?
Since I asked some questions, I don't have any more questions.
That's the way it's supposed to work. All right. Thank you for helping me make up that time, Ashley. Is there, what's next on your list here?
I'm going to move right into the COVID expenditures. It's just been updated since our last meeting. Not going to go over it in detail, but at a high level, I just wanted the committee to know, to date, we've received $1.2 million in aid for COVID relief. We have earmarked or spent down all of that money. With the new relief package that was signed last week, we are going to be expecting SR3 dollars coming out. We do not know what that allocation is going to be. There's been speculation that it'll be about two times the amount we received in SR1. So that could be about approximately a million dollars from Ashley, but again, I do not have that number. In conversations with the Department of Ed, they do not see that allocation coming out until FY22, just where we stand. Once they receive monies from the federal government, they provide us the RFP to do the application. That won't come out until probably the end of June, July timeframe. I'll keep you updated though as we know more. The state has also mentioned we could be receiving more monies towards the food service account. They said we four times the amount potentially what we received before. That was only $4,000 in our prior allotment, so I don't see a lot of money coming from that, but it is something to help us with the rest of the school year. Any questions on COVID funding?
I have one, Ashley. On the top of page 44, you said 1.2, but it says 1.4 here.
So those break down into our allotments, so the 1.2 is specifically to us. You cannot see the 650 on here because we just wrote that application.
Okay.
And it was actually submitted after I finished my report, so that we didn't include that here. We earmarked all that. That's what the summer school is going to be funded out of in our furniture and also the full testing once the state stops funding it. So I'll add that to my next report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? All right, food services.
And then my final report is food service. It's just an update from our last one. One note, we'll be receiving approximately $25,000 in revenue. As you can see, it's a lot different from the last report because our revenue is cleared. Again, I'll be meeting with the town at the end of the month to be moving money probably back into this, expenditures back into this account. So you will not probably see that net balance of $7,000 as we move forward. But that was the agreement we had at the beginning of the year. We wouldn't run into deficit, but we wouldn't have a surplus most likely at the end of the year. Any questions about food service?
Don?
So I'm dead.
He looks poised, that's why.
Well, okay. May not be an easy question, but when I look at what was allocated to COVID for food services supplies, 173,000. And then I'm looking at this report, I'm trying to figure out where that 173.
So you need to look up a little bit above. So in that second set of charts, FY21, Town of Mashpee, COVID cares. That final line that said food service supplies and personnel, 263, 918, 95.
Yep.
That was through the end of February. So if you look back at that report, you have 263, 918, 95. Those are the actuals. That 173 is our projected encumbrances through the end of the school year. That is not on this.
But the 263.
It's at the bottom of the third column, on the food service.
Okay. All right, so I see that one. Then the 173.
Those are the encumbrances. That's what we're projecting. Those are not in this actual report through the end of February.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Hello? Ashley, I have one question for you. What's the latest that you're hearing on chapter 70?
Try not to turn around.
All right. I have received no update. They're moving forward with the Student Opportunity Act. So what we've received so far is the best information I have. I believe they met this week in conference. I was out yesterday, so I can follow up on that. But I have not heard a decrease in our chapter 70 for next year.
So I heard that they were basing it on enrollment numbers from FY, from this school year, which will be down for everybody across the state.
Correct, but they're going to hold us harmless.
So what does that translate to?
So they are going to give us the increment of, that's why we have approximately, it's $20,000. Sorry, I don't have that information. I was taught they have. But based on what the governor had released in his proposal, we did not receive a reduction in our chapter 70.
Okay. So even though they're using lower enrollment than we had the year before, we're not going to see less money from the state?
Correct.
All right, I'll leave it when I see it. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Ashley? All right, subcommittees. Outreach Working Group.
Yeah.
So the Outreach Working Group's main focus, I think, between this meeting and the last, is the family opinion survey for 2021. We did need to sort of do a final look at the survey. We did hold our focus group and that was a pretty interesting discussion, a good conversation. We didn't have a large group. Some people did not, but had our Zoom meetings. But the parents that did had really good insight. And I know through conversations with a couple of members, the issue of us requesting that a parent provide their student's name obviously does not make it an anonymous survey. But we did, and I have promised all parents and guardians, that that information on a singular student level is not being shared with teachers or principals. There will be sort of aggregate information by school. And I, I felt, or I feel, when I looked at all of the different comments that were added in where you could freely write, some parents shared concerns that I was able to address, whether they brought up a bus issue, then that became something that we problem solved. It was a need for some counseling, then that was something that we were able to take immediate action on. So I personally feel, and I think I mentioned today in an email, that, you know, anonymous complaining is really not something we can take action on. We really need to know the specifics. And we talk about that all the time within the district too, that you need to own your opinions and help us problem solve together. I was pleased we did, the survey is still open. I think I was going to leave it open until next month, like whole month's worth. I'm not sending reminders. I sent a reminder every Monday, so everyone got the initial survey and two reminders. And you can see on this chart, you don't have the chart that I have, although I probably sent it. But I did share it with you via an email, I don't know if that was today, when I shared that. But the response rate by family is pretty, does anyone want one?
That's the same as what's in the packet?
It didn't have the bottom chart.
Oh, oh, yeah, I remember.
It didn't have 2019 comparison. Obviously, 2008, 2020, here we are, 2020, we had like an 18% participation rate because that was, you know, the crash and burn when we went totally closing the schools. But I think it's interesting to look back at 2019. And I know that we had it more divided up by households, but up at the top this year, you're looking at strictly households, frecums, quashnet, Mashpee Middle and Mashpee High School. I can't total that number of respondents and compare it to the 959 families because there are families in multiple schools. But if you're looking at just who responded and the number of families in each school, that's a pretty good response rate. So I feel, I mean, I feel pretty positive about this year's survey and hopefully, and I also shared with members, there's plenty of negative feedback in the survey, so I don't really feel, I hope that we continue to create a culture in this district where people can share their. People can share their thoughts and opinions so that we can problem solve and make things better. And so anyway, if anyone has any questions, I will answer them. We have not dived into every one of the questions to look at the results. That's also going to be pushed a little bit down. But I will answer any questions I am capable of answering.
I guess, I just want to say, I think by having the different, having the format this year, we are able to make better use of the feedback that we're getting from parents and be able to, as Patty mentioned, solve some problems because we have enough information to be able to do it versus in the past where we've had a higher level of information. So we've been able to act on it. And I'm pleased personally, from my perspective at least, that the participation rate is actually slightly above what it was in 2019. So it doesn't appear to me that there's a negative impact of the changes that were made in the survey format.
Well, you're entitled to that opinion.
I have to.
No, I would say that we've, and I said this to Patty, I think we really benefited from the fact of COVID. Email correspondence with the district has been steady and regular throughout the school year. And so I think we got a better response rate because we have better contact with families, better email, better information. And maybe people aren't, you know, they're more plugged into an email from the superintendent. So I think, I think we did get a little lift from that because our database is going to be a little stronger. So I think that's really pretty positive. Kathy, did you have any questions or additions?
I, you know, I'm glad to see that we did get the response. And I kind of agree with you that I think people are a little more in tune to email communication, which I think whole worked to our benefit. You know, and using the information kind of in a strange year to address the concerns that COVID brought about, which I think was kind of the primary focus of this particular survey. Sounds like was helpful based on superintendent towards ability to address those comments as they came in. So that, to me, seems like a very positive thing to come from this survey this year. So I'm optimistic that we continue to see this response rate increase year over year. Thanks to you to be able to provide the improved responses to those issues and concerns families are expressing, or to acknowledge the good things too. Because I'm sure there's a lot of good things in there as well, so.
I also think that you need to think about the first two years of our survey, we're survey monkey. Last year was Panorama, this year was Google, and I don't know, maybe it helps having the picture of the school, I don't know. I think it felt more Mashpeeized with this year's survey.
I'm sure. Was it simpler to use Google? Jeff, do you have any?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I, my comments that I shared with the Outreach Working Group and the superintendent were just that, you know, it wasn't until I was taking the survey as a parent that I saw the changes that were made that were different than what we reviewed as a school committee. I'm not sure whether we as a school committee have to review the survey before it goes out or. So seeing the name of a student's name, while I recognize gave a lot of advantages, it just destroyed our ability to do the year-over-year comparisons. But as Patty suggested, and I think she's right, this probably isn't a valid year to compare with anything anyway. So I'm glad that some of that stuff in there. I do disagree that anonymous feedback is not good feedback. I think it is entirely reliant on trust. And I think it will be good to see, you know, that relationship with the school grow. I think that's one of the reasons we did the survey was to better, you know, connect the families with the district and feel like they had a voice or could share concerns. So I just, I would urge you to maybe reconsider that in the future in that, you know, it's pretty, if people don't, if people think that there could be outcomes, negative outcomes based on their comments, they typically don't say those things. But like you said, it's all about trust. Clearly, people trusted you to act on the things that they put in there. So I'll be curious to see what the numbers are, how they break down by school. Since we don't have like apples to apples, it's kind of hard to compare the response rates right now. But it's definitely encouraging. So I'll be, I'll be psyched to see the end results. Is Suzie going to print those out for us for the next meeting? Or some future meeting, like May or something?
A future meeting, I'm not going to respond.
Yeah. All right, thank you. And thanks to the Outreach Working Group. Finance? What do we have from finance?
We have a meeting.
I feel like we had a meeting.
We met before last meeting.
Yeah, so we're.
We're good.
We're good? Okay. Liaison reports. Does anyone have one besides me?
I will say that I have not been meeting with the finance committee only because during the budget process, I wanted to make sure that that was just Ashley talking. But when the budget process is done, I will, I guess it'll be, it'll be done till May, so I'll be there here.
Okay, so I guess from the Wampanoag liaison perspective, since we didn't have Roxanne here tonight, we did have a Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe and Public Schools Leadership Meeting yesterday, one of our quarterly meetings. The highlights for the committee are that Clayton Oakley-Robins, a Mashpee graduate, is a new para this year at the Mashpee Middle High School. And he's also the new Indian Ed Coordinator for the district. So if. So you guys, is that right? Anyone who knew Carla, Clayton is now in that role, is that right, Mark? Okay. And there are, let's see, Mark already touched on the language. Quashnet added an Indian Ed tutor 15 hours a week. And so then we still have Jay Smith at the Coom School. I mentioned the grade two curriculum. I think a real highlight is there have been counseling team meetings. So this was something that's been discussed throughout the partnership this year as better connecting the folks working with youth in the tribal education department and other parts of the tribe with the counselors from the district in terms of partnering on how to better serve students. And then the STEP grant, which is a, is that Ed, Department of Ed or BIA?
It's DOR.
No, it's not. It's a federal grant.
I thought they said it was DOR.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's Department of Interior. It's a state tribal education partnership grant, but it comes from the federal government. So that's really interesting because it's helping them build the capacity of their education department and the public school system and state employees. It doesn't, doesn't allow them to work directly with students, but it's really to build the capacity to serve Native students. And so there's some really interesting opportunities with respect to curriculum, professional development, and native teacher recruitment that's certain to, I think, help Mashpee. And let's see, I think, and then we heard from Brian Brody, who is the Social Sciences, Social Studies Department Chair, about the Plymouth Patuxet. There's going to be a one-day summer course that's free and virtual about Native voices and perspectives. So that sounds kind of interesting. I might want to check that out. And then I know it's kind of come up later, but this will just dispense with this quickly. As you guys are all aware, there's a tribal election on March 26th, so there's going to be a new tribal chairman, a new vice chairman, there's a number of new tribal council members. So we've really, based on our discussion yesterday at the quarterly meeting, said that we're going to hold off on discussing our joint meeting until some of those changes occur. But we're looking at our July school committee meeting again to have that be the joint meeting. That's kind of a tentative plan right now.
And we did have a list of meetings for your review for next year's school committee, but we pulled it off of this agenda because of the time this agenda was being pulled.
Thank you. We'll do that next time. Okay, so did I miss anything, Kathy or Patty, that you wanted to share?
No, I added some detailed notes to that document today, though, so.
Yeah. If you guys, we should probably send that out to the larger committee. Patty has done a great job of sort of identifying and characterizing all the accomplishments and the notes from all of our leadership meetings, and it's in one comprehensive document. And it's really, it's really gratifying to see the growth of the partnership, the mature, how it's matured over the years, and also just, you know, we've got Darius now working for the tribe as an outreach coordinator in the education department. We've had Roxanne in that role for several years. We have Cameron Green here, we have John Hanlon, now we have Clayton up at the school. Just a really great group of folks to work with on the tribal side. And then our, of course, our leadership team here is just responsive and engaged as ever, so it's, it's really such a point of pride for the district. So thank you, Patty, for your leadership on that. All right, next on the agenda, yeah, so talk to me about, so we had a, we were going to discuss this proclamation for the arts, which is in your packet. We prepared a letter.
One in your packet is not, you received a secondary.
Oh, yeah, that's right. This is the old one.
Your version is, was.
Yeah, I looked at it online. So the question is, since between our meetings, Desi did issue new guidance to permit many of the things that we were discussing to happen. So I don't know if we have any suggestions from the committee as to how we should proceed, or Patty, if you have a suggestion?
I just think that now that the guidelines have changed, we are able to move forward with those activities that it's timely to submit this letter.
I move to postpone indefinitely.
I second.
Jeff moves to postpone indefinitely, Maria, and Kathy seconds. Is there any discussion? Yes, Don?
I was just looking to see if there was a vote listed on it.
It was listed.
Yeah, no, I have no questions.
Okay. So on the motion to indefinitely postpone, we're going to call for the vote. Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
I say yes as well. All right, new business, Patty, school choice.
Hey, real quick, if I may, for one question. So we don't have to vote on school choice anymore?
You have to vote to get, if you want to leave.
Exactly.
Okay. Got it.
So all you have here on page 50 of the packet is sort of a proposed school choice, choice seats for FY '22. Obviously, if you were choosing not to remain in the program, this sheet would mean nothing. So I, we don't have to do anything. Do you have any questions, though?
Yeah, we actually have to agenda item a negative vote and hold a public hearing in order to get out of school choice according to the new guidelines, so it would be quite the endeavor.
So the star was only there if you were looking to move forward to pull out the school choice.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to do anything for the status quo?
No.
Do we have to do anything about the fact that it was scheduled for a vote on the agenda?
The vote was only if we were going to pull out, so.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on, or questions for Patty on school choice? Don? Kathy?
No.
Jeff?
Nope.
All right. The next item, the joint meeting, I just mentioned that, so we're on to graduation. Patty?
So graduation is June 5th, it will be outside. We have already, our difference with Al Strojini's team have already secured the rental for the tents. We'll pretty much have them for that week, so we're planning some other activities for the seniors using those, that tent. But that way, we didn't want to have to worry about where we were at on June 5th if we were going with an indoor, so we just went outdoor. And it was nice last year, and we will have a nice green grass this year. And so the ordering of robes is not happening yet, but Sheri Nitski will make sure that she, you know, reaches out to all of you when that time comes. And I'm recommending that we continue with hashtag 212, the extra degree of the book. I think it's still very meaningful, given all that our students have endured this year, and it sends them off a really positive message. That is it for this topic. If you have any questions?
God, I hope it's as straightforward as it seems. Since we already did it once, I hope it's.
It'll be, it'll be better this year.
Yeah, I hope so. Yeah. All right, next item, racial equity workshop for the school committee.
Yeah, so I had asked that this be added to the agenda. At the legislator breakfast that we had with MAST, I had an opportunity to talk to one of the school board committee members from Falmouth, and she had recommend, she said that the Falmouth School Committee, the Select Board, and maybe others, and I'm not sure who else was included in that group, did a racial equity workshop with Police Warne, is that?
Yeah, Dr. Warne.
Who facilitated that. And so in the packet is information from their website in regard to, a little bit about who she is, what they do, and some testimonials. But as a follow-up, particularly in regard to the proclamations that this committee has issued in regard to, or resolutions in regard to racial equity and diversity, I think this would be a timely workshop that the committee could do sometime this summer. And I would be looking for, I guess, the committee to authorize the superintendent to engage with Dr. Warne and see if it's possible to do such a workshop for the school committee and the administration at some point this summer or early fall.
Would you include the Board of Selectmen in that?
As many people as we could socially distance in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't see why we would close any particular group from being able to participate in that. But I think we need to get some more information before we're able to spread that to the masses. So I wanted to get the committee's blessing so that we could take the next step to pursuing it. And then, once we have the information, we could always, obviously, go back to the committee for final approval. But I feel we, we need authorization to take the first step.
Jeff or Kathy?
Well, she spoke at the, what was it, the MAST Division 10 Diversity, it was like, what, two or three weeks ago, they had that diversity, and I logged into that. She's a very engaging speaker, she's very, she brings material in a very easy-to-digest way that you can, is both, you know, very introspective, but also helps you kind of open that mind up, so you're not just looking out, you're also looking in. And I appreciated how she approached it in that small segment, so I do think she would be beneficial for us to meet with and hear more from. I really enjoyed listening to her, and I really enjoyed, you know, how she presented the material, and just her perspective on it all was very enlightening. So I would be fine with it, I think. Like I said, I really enjoyed listening to her.
Jeff?
I support it.
Yeah, I do as well. And I think it would be great, especially if we could do something in partnership with the Board of Selectmen. We could have a few new members, they might have a few new members by the summer, so.
Sure.
The timing would be good.
So I'll make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to engage Dr. Warne from an exploratory perspective to get information in regard to providing a workshop for the school committee and other potential, the school committee administration and other potential elected officials from the town of Mashpee.
Okay, you got all that, Maria?
I think so.
Just put, and, et cetera.
All right, I've got a motion from Don, or a second.
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. Any discussion? All right, I will call for the vote. Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks for bringing that to the committee. Don? Have we met since the legislative breakfast? We had a meeting?
No.
Oh. Let me just say, we, at Patty's suggestion, we had this racial equity discussion with about almost 55 members of school committees across Division 7, which is basically the Cape and Wareham and a couple, Carver, a few districts off Cape. And Patty suggested we invite new students, and so we included Cheyenne Hendricks from Mashpee as well as a student from Barnstable. And Cheyenne's like totally a celebrity now with all these school committee members. They, I think she needs like an agent because they all want her to come and speak at, heard their meetings and talk about this topic. She was really thoughtful, well-spoken, charming, I mean, just very candid and refreshing, I think. And it was a great idea by the superintendent to include a student in that discussion, but I was also very proud that she came from Mashpee, so. Anything you want to add about that, Patty?
No, I just was listening to Cheyenne talk about how she feels a lot of her peers, they don't want to speak out about a lot of topics because, and she's the one that brought up cancel culture, and I'm like, so, listening to someone at that age who's that knowledgeable and there's that worry that everyone has about sharing their own opinions and what might happen because of that, so that's something we can work on with her. But she was very insightful, and I think that's why that conversation had so much more meaning, because we're obviously trying to make things better for that generation, and listening to that perspective was very powerful.
Yeah, she was really emphasizing listening, you know, talking to more students and encouraging those conversations and just, you know, having the conversations, you know, instead of just assuming that you know where people land or having like agendas. But she said that, you know, there are uncomfortable discussions, but that we still need to have them, and she felt like her generation was, you know, willing to do that if given the space to do so. So I thought that was really cool. Okay, the next item is the MCAS positional statement. And so I put this on the agenda because of the, or I asked for it to be put on the agenda because at our Board of Directors meeting last week, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees endorsed this statement that you have that was released by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And I think there is certainly movement and interest across the state to really push back on this MCAS requirement for this year. It's, I don't know whether we can influence that decision, but I feel like we should either develop our own positional statement or, you know, again, endorse this statement by the school superintendents. You know, we have been doing, and as a school committee member, I'm pretty aware of the diagnostic assessments that we do throughout the year for our students, and that those are really the best measures of, you know, any learning loss that we've had in our district, and we have plans to do, and the capabilities to act on that information. The MCAS results are not going to be used for accountability this year, they've already told us that, but they will still be published, which is frightening. And more importantly, I think, in light of our conversation tonight about kids returning in person, we all acknowledge that that's a big shift and that there's a lot involved in that. And then, you know, saddling these weeks of testing, once we finally got all of our kids back in school, just seems like an added stressor for our kids that just is completely unnecessary. So if you are concerned about this like I am, I think, you know, we should push back and say that we want, you know, Massachusetts leads this country in public education, and this is just a terrible idea that we should be out front on. And so I really, I wish we could somehow get this heard, and I just feel like we should add our voice to, you know, the other school committee members across the state, the state association, the superintendents. Let's weigh in and say, you know, we agree with this, this is, let's let this go this year. So that's my request to the committee.
Isn't the DOE already declining the request to waive standardized testing?
Well, the DOE, if you don't get the waiver from DOE, the state still has the discretion Well, the DOE, if you don't get the waiver from DOE, the state still has the discretion to only require it for the year, you know, the grades and in the fashion that it must be completed. So, it doesn't have to be like the whole BOAX. So, Massachusetts still has the ability to only do the testing for the grades that are mandated, mandated by the Department of Education, for example. Massachusetts statute expands the grades that we test on. So, the question is, what will we have to test? Does anyone from the administration want to weigh in or add?
I just want to say, you know, there is a bill, because I recall last year, it had to go to the legislature, in our legislature, in order to cancel MCAS in 2020. So, at the end of that first paragraph, where there is, it says, "We ask that our legislators support the recently filed HD 1448, an app to cancel the administration of MCAS." So, I really feel that we need to, not how, but we, we really need to put our efforts into every legislate, legislator up there to support this and make it so that it doesn't happen. That's my feeling of something that we should do.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. I didn't see that on here, but the, the Mass Board of Directors also unanimously voted to support HD 1448.
And I believe the MTA, I, I think we're all, we're all unified in this, I don't know.
The AFT, the MTA, the MAS, the MASC, all have endorsed this proposal. You never see all those groups agreeing on anything, or rarely, I should say.
So, what do you guys think? Can we add our, add our names to the list?
I'm going to say yes. I think with the way that everything's happening, like you said, my concern and concerns of the people I've spoken to is, you know, the kids coming back, adjusting to the new way of life, we're going to throw this extra stress on them with the MCAS. So, nope, I'm not okay with that. Let's, let's support this.
What do you mean by, what do you mean by ask for a list?
Well, and that's just a generic way of saying, let's speak up. So, we can either make a statement that says we're, we're in support of HD 1448, we can add that we agree with the Mass statement that they published on February 25th. You do both of those things? Patty, do you have any other ideas?
I think if we were to create sort of a response letter that we could share with families, that they can individually send to our legislators, that would be helpful to sort of flood that. And I also think, whether you're, you know, we, we need the old colony superintendents, which goes from, you know, Rhode Island border to P-Town. You have your Division 7, there's, there's all of these sort of motherships that we all need to, whether it's one letter, we're all signing our names to it, the MTA presidents from every district should sign on. So, creating that, that pressure on the legislators, I think, is important.
I like that idea.
I mean, it seems to me that, you know, the, the best route would be corresponding directly with the legislators in our district. So, what's that, Julian Seer and?
Biara.
Biara. And, you know, sending a letter directly to them from the school committee would be, in my opinion, the most effective route. Sending it to Boston is pretty hopeless, because it just goes in the pile, but if you send it directly to, to those two individuals, it will get noticed.
That was what we were going to do, right? Was that what you were already implying with that?
Yeah, I mean, I was also thinking of like the committee chair and the sponsor, you know, we, just putting our support on for the House legislation, because I think at this point, that's the best chance of.
Oh, right. I mean, send, sending a letter, you know, supporting the passage of HD 1448.
Right, with, with our reasoning, yeah.
Would anybody be, problem with, go ahead and then, because, so this is timely, we don't fall into the same situation with the music proclamation, that we can authorize the chairman or the vice chairman to work with the administration to get the letter done out as soon as possible? So, would I have to have another meeting? I don't personally have any issue with that at all.
Okay, that sounds great. What do you guys think about having something available for families to submit?
I personally like that idea. I think if more families are able to voice their opinion to the legislation as well, it will, like you said, add weight, add voices, and continue to show, you know, what people really think. And since, you know, this is, I think, something on a lot of people's minds, I, I don't see it as a bad thing. If we, if we provided a form letter, so to speak, you know, like sometimes you'll get those text messages of, you know, text your senator, I guess, like, it doesn't have to be something, I mean, we could probably maybe do something like that, but, you know, I don't know how intricate that might be, but if we provided like a Google letter document and people could just forward it off, and even give them the email addresses in it, so that they don't even have to look it up.
Right. Yeah, everything would be given to them.
Yeah.
And we have other social media we could use as well, right, and the app that we could, I'm not sure if we can.
Well, the app is, the app company went, no idea.
Oh. I can remove that from my phone, I figured.
Principal Val Strachey, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to mention that back in the fall, the Cape and Islands High School Principals, we meet as a collective group every, probably, month or two, and we actually had a chance to Zoom and meet with Senator Seer regarding this back in November. And his advice, and we took it, and we penned a letter. Dr. Funk, the DUI, made me write it. However, it was a great experience, and he said the best way to do it is to send it right to them. And we said that not only to Senator Seer, but the whole entire Cape and Islands delegation.
Yeah.
So, this is a suggestion that, I agree with Mr. Myers, that is, the best way to get there is directly through them.
Yeah, because it would seem weird to not include Sarah Peake and some of these, you know, big advocates that we have on the team. Yes, Jeff? Okay, well. Do you want to, anyone want to make a motion before Jeff leaves?
Well, I, I.
I can't see what's going on back there.
I'm just trying to get the microphone. I'm, I'm so sad that I'm on video right now. I move to authorize the vice chair of the school committee to work with the administration to draft a letter in our support of the HR legislation to waive the MCAS testing for the 21 schools here.
And it can be chair or vice chair, right?
No, I said vice chair.
You did, okay. All right, then I guess it's my responsibility. Okay, and Kathy seconds? Any discussion? Jeff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have one final item on here, I'm not sure who submitted this, timely and relevant communication with school committee? I think, I think it was the guy who just left.
So, can I make a motion to move that to the next meeting?
Yeah, so, we'll carry that over. I, do I, do we need to have a motion to do that?
No.
No, it's, okay. So, we'll, we'll carry that to the next meeting. I don't believe I have any items that I didn't know in advance, does anyone? Is there any additional public comment?
There is nothing in the chat.
Okay, and there is no member of the public here, so with that, our agenda is complete, and we are adjourned.